Okay, I think we're ready now that Lisa's finally here.[4.01][4.01](Laughter). I had to get you back.
Yes, he did.
You can leave now.
Okay, we ready?
Yeah.
So, we're rocking and rolling, Terry? We're on the air, okay. Okay, I don't -- do I have an updated agenda?
Here.
Do I need that? That I have. I'll just go for that.
Here, there's an updated agenda. I have one. Eleanor, I gave him one.
I got one. Thank you, everybody.
Anybody need a pen?
Okay, so this is --
I didn't bring those.
This is the regularly scheduled Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, March 10th, 2016. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as we have it in our hands?
So moved.
Okay, Michael makes that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What about approval of the minutes of February 11th, 2016? I read them, they looked okay to me. Anybody have a comment? No?
No.
Okay, so why doesn't somebody make a motion?
I'll make my motion.
All right. Michael, Lisa made it. Michael seconded it. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, Satchin's -- okay, in a slight new wrinkle that I think I've discussed with most of you, all the alternates can sit up here unless you have a specific -- or this is the same with regular members, too. Unless you have a specific conflict with the application, which case, obviously, you wouldn't sit up here. But the notion being, and then when it comes time to a vote, normally, the five regular members will vote unless, again, somebody's not sitting for some reason, they're not here, or they had a conflict, or they had to leave the room for whatever reason. And then I guess I pick, the chairman picks the alternates. I know, I don't, that part's a little uncomfortable, but, you know.
Oh, you pick the alternate.
Good vote.
Sort of right where the board sits at all times unless somebody can't.
The regular members vote, yeah. Eleanor?
Mr. Chairman, you can just, Mr. Rectordust, Chairman Rectordust, just alternate between the alternate.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a need to bring one in.
I would do that. I would curry favor, though.[175.01][175.01](Laughter). I snicker as on occasion. So anyways, that, I, unless the, now, this is not how we have done it traditionally.
Right.
I mean, in the 20s, 15, 20 years that I've had.
That's correct.
Or do we have any reservations about that, this new system?
If that's what the town council said is the correct way to do it, then I think that she would know.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. If one of the regular members abstains, will you then seek a fifth member?
Well, the fifth member arguably would be here anyway.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean, if, say, Susan abstained and didn't want to vote, does it --
Oh, abstain?
Yeah.
Uh, I would hope that wouldn't happen. I would hope that if you are uncomfortable with voting on something, you would -- I don't know, Mark. I would have to find out, but I would think.
Well, there's a difference between abstaining and recusing yourself.
Right, exactly.
If you're recusing yourself, I don't think you should be sitting at this table.
No, no question.
Yeah, he's just saying if you've gone through the testimony, and now, all of a sudden, you're unsure about voting.
Unsure about your courage?
Yeah, or whatever, I don't know. If you're undecided.
If there were four votes in favor, I mean, if somebody goes through the entire hearing, unless there's four votes in favor, or...
Unless it's going to carry, anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think you should vote.
I'll do a little research on that subject. Again, I would hope that if someone sits through the entire hearing.
I mean, they do abstain every now and then at the HGC, and usually, you're getting your approval anyway, that's true.
Again, I pers, yeah. Not sure I want to compare us to the HGC, or look to them for guidance, but I would just hope that if you sit here, you have the gumption to vote, but that's neither here nor there.
I think the only time I've ever heard anyone abstain is when all the other four votes have gone and we're all positive.
So, they don't want to go --
Or negative.
Yeah, all right, whatever. That's fine, we can cross that bridge. But we're comfortable with the general notion.
Yeah.
And anybody sitting up here can ask questions. Lester Plannis-Thomas, I would like you to wait 10 years. So, we're good?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, what do they do for extra chairs?
There's one over here.
A non-cushy chair, so there will be, okay?
I think regular members get the cushy chairs.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
Last man standing, right?
Last man standing, that's fair. All the more reason to be prompt. Okay, so having said all that, we're on to old business, I guess, which is really sort of new business, 7611 Satchin's Path LLC, Satchin's Path 40B for the applicant. Go ahead, just identify yourself and speak away.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Frayer from Housing Assistance Corporation. I know Ed Wepchew is just here giving you a brief update, but this, the reason today that we're here is in response to a request made by Nantucket House Historical Commission regarding driveway materials, and so we're hoping that you would be able to make a determination that that request was insubstantial as it pertains to the comprehensive permit.
The Historic District Commission, not the --
I'm sorry, Historic District Commission, yes.
Okay, so...
What was the change?
The change was basically...
Driveway material options.
Right, that they could do anything within...
Including shell, gravel, stone, concrete, asphalt, concrete, let's list it again, brick and Belgian block.
Right.
Is that up to the owner of the unit, or...
I think it's...
I, it would be, as far as we're concerned, it's what we could put in on future houses going forward. Right now, the houses that are complete have the crushed shell, as had been originally dictated.
And the HGC is okay with any of those materials in there, or are we supposed to be making that determination for the HGC? Someone's asking me to get more concrete, or asphalt, or...
That's fair, although, so why is this change coming about? Just refresh my memory.
We had a request from Historic, so I think that they went out and saw the crushed shell, and just wanted to make sure that there was a variety of materials that would be available. Originally, per the comp permit, we had planned on a crushed shell everywhere, except for our ADA house, which we require, like, asphalt for, you know, a wheelchair, you know, a harder surface, obviously. We have no intention of putting anything, you know, other than crushed shell, or if you were allowed, you know, peystone or gravel type of driveway, so...
Yeah, I don't have any issue with shell, gravel, or stone.
But this came at the request of the HGC.
That's correct.
They want to make sure that there's variety.
Yes, I think that's our intention.
But I, you know, I can't imagine they'd want Belgian block in there, just because it seems appropriate, so...
Were they concerned about the apron material, too? The concrete apron material?
It's probably 10 times more expensive.
Yes.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, they're not going to put it in there, but it's...
I know that there were some discussions that were had with Historic, and that this was the request that they had put in, but right now, we are currently planned, my understanding on the other side is the concrete apron. I think it's fair to say that they were, you know, unaware or didn't appreciate that there was a concrete sidewalk in place currently that had been put in, you know, having done the infrastructure first and compliance with the comp permit. So ultimately, I think they're just looking for some variety of materials in the end for the homeowners.
I don't have a problem with it, I don't think.
So, the HGC's not asking us to make an aesthetic judgment?
No, I think it's just a de minimis change to the comprehensive permit.
So, are you okay with it?
Mm-hmm.
So, I believe what we're trying to determine is whether or not this is insubstantial.
Correct.
And if it is, no further discussion needs to take place.
I would make that motion.
Okay, let me just ask, is there anyone else out here who wants to speak to this one? No. Okay, so Michael, Michael's making a motion that it is insubstantial.
Seconded that?
That was you, Carol? Yeah. So, now again, so on our new voting situation, it's the five regular members.
Okay. But doesn't it ma, doesn't, so we don't keep the people who sat, oh, because this is a new modification.
This has come through a number of different times with different people sitting, so it's not technically old business, it's new business. So, anyway, are we good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we are not talking about 416 right now.
I didn't sit on that.
So, we're going to 616.
Can I ask some questions? Did you guys set a date for the site viewing for that?
No, it's at the end of the agenda.
Oh, okay. Just let me know.
Um, I think it's okay.
Is there any reason in terms of you'll be around?
Plus or minus.
Yeah, plus or minus.
That's fine.
Uh, okay. So, we're on to 616, 1620 Capital LLC, 25 Broadway, for the applicant.
Mr. Richard Glidden for the applicant, only because everyone else in the firm is sick. Sarah is here on behalf of some neighbors and has asked me a couple of questions. I was wondering if you could go on to the next hearing before this, so I could call Mr. Thoreau and Mr. Brescher and get the answers to Sarah's questions before we go on.
If it's quick, Ellen Palm is, I'm leaving. I'm only here for this.
I don't know what's next. What's next is 8 Atlantic Avenue. Eleanor, do you have something to speak?
One concern that just occurred to me, given that last minute notification of Jim Mondoni that he was not making it today, he is sitting on this.
He is?
He is.
But now does it matter?
Sure.
But now, does it matter?
I don't remember him sitting on it, but...
He was the, you were the only member present last month. The member sitting on this application. There were three absent members.
Okay, I'm going to go with you. Your word, so...
So, the, one of the, one of the people who has to sit isn't here?
Yeah.
It appears that way.
Well... Correct me. I think he did, I was in the audience.
Why were you in the audience if we were shorthanded?
You were not here last month.
Yeah, you were in Florida, I think. You were in the audience, but it was...
No, I came...
You came back for it.
I came back.
But did you have a conflict?
No, no, I was talking on my phone outside, I came back in and...
Are you sure, Eleanor? I mean, I'm not, not disbelieving you, but I'm just...
Look at Terry's minutes in the packet, please. That's what I had.
Are you sure, Terry?
Yes!
Well, the issue is that nobody can jump, just jump back in. They would have had to have been sitting up here or mullending.
Well, within reason, I think if you were sitting in the audience and paying attention, you know, I would ask the applicant, I guess, if that's okay, but I don't know why if we were shorthanded.
In the opposition?
Well, in the opposition, obviously.
Looking on the opposition.
Does anybody else have comprehen, Dick, what do you remember?
I remember I wasn't here.[839.23][839.23](Laughter).
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Well, if they're in the minutes, let's go back to the minutes.
Well, Terry, Terry's already said that.
Um, do you have an issue with it, Sarah?
I would only say that if I were the applicant on this particular application, I would go for a...
No, I mean, can't we have Michael sit since he was here?
Yeah, but Michael wasn't.
Eleanor swears Michael wasn't here.
Oh.
And... Michael wasn't here sitting up there, even if he was here, he was sitting up there. Is that correct?
He was here in the room.
But you weren't sitting there, well.
You weren't paying attention?
Well...
All right, anyway, so what do you want to do, applicant and opposition?
Well, I, the applicant's, I'm, I'm not comfortable, this, I don't know where this is going to go, but I'm not comfortable with it not being everything in order, so I would, I guess we're going to have to wait till next month when the full board can be here.
Yeah, one hopes. Unfortunately, we just learned of this, this morning, or we would have let you know. I apologize. Or maybe it was, yeah, I think it was this morning that Jim let us know he was not going to be here.
I thought he was going to be here.
Well, something came up.
Yeah, must have, because I, a couple days ago, I said he would be here.
Okay, I don't want to be a complete idiot, but where in, you know, where in the minutes...
First page, Terry's minutes.
He doesn't, he doesn't speak, so it's, he's just listed as being sitting.
Well, no, I'm looking at new business of the mi, of the minutes.
Yeah, number two, Tool, Botticelli, McCarthy, Cozy, Tackle, Mondoni.
No, that was DJ McKin, am I looking at the...
No, 1620 Capital LLC, number two.
Hey, John.
Oh, never mind. I got, I, I'm, I'm back.
You're making me worried.
Um, okay, I mean, I got to go with that and/or, I don't know. He's not here.
Well, if he's not here and he was there, then, then I guess we need to continue it.
Yeah, so, and you don't want to continue with four?
No.
Okay. Sorry for the inconvenience. Okay, so, can I get a motion to continue to, what is it, April 10?
14.
14.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, will someone second that?
I'll second it.
Lisa seconds. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, is there anything non-kosher or un-kosher about taking the thing, other business, out of order for five minutes and setting a date while everybody's here?
Only that I was informed by attorney Reed that he was going to come specifically for that.
Okay, never mind. It's, it's okay.
Lisa?
Lisa, we'll work it out.
I signed him. I handed him down. If you can, if you could do it on a Tuesday, we could, we can call him. Then I'm, I'll definitely be here.
The HGC?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, but...
The woman at the garden, is, oh, it's not the fire?
No, I mean, we're not going to do it in the evening, right? Although it is getting, going to be lighter later.
I could maybe with the food truck and cocktails, no. Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. We'll, we'll make it work.
Yeah.
The stuff will be up for more than a day, anyway. Okay, so...
Everybody have a nice week.
You, too.
You, too. Be careful.
Like tacos.
Nice. Lots of snow.
Yeah, I know, I know, unfortunately.
Tough life.
Have fun.
All right, so now we are on 516 William J. Stone II, 8 Atlantic Avenue, for the applicant. Is he here?
No, and I have a conflict on this one. So, does that mean, that means I go sit in the audience, or do I just do...
No, you definitely do not sit up here.
We don't sit, I don't sit up here.
But Mr. Jensen's not here. Are you here for this?
No, I'm, I'm here for the next one. I can help all of them. Well, Mike, please, for Jensen.
No, I think we should continue it if he's not going to show up. Just continue it.
Well, he could have had, you know, a car accident, or...
That means he's not going to show up.
True, but, I mean, we could give him a little bit of the benefit of the doubt.
We do extend the courtesy to other people.
Especially since he's a past administrator.
I think we can, can, can give him a little bit of wiggle room, and we will go on to the next applicant, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
All right. 916 Jennifer Reagan, 36 York Street, for the applicant.
For the applicant, Mary Ann Hanley. We're here to request a modification, or in the alternative variants of the relief in case numbers 45-11. This involves property at 36 York Street, which in 4511, permission was given to lift it up and put a new foundation of full basement under it and put it back down. After that was done, a plot plan was done, and it appears that the house has shifted just a little bit, so that a couple of the setback distances are one point, about one and a half inches closer to the lot line than they were before, although three of the lot line distances are further away, which is a nice thing, and one stayed exactly the same. Not quite sure how that happened, you know, settling the way, it just tilted a little bit, but...
I don't think we have to...
We can't explain it. I don't think anybody could explain it.
It's close enough.
And to, so you could certainly modify that addition, that previous relief to allow for change in the setback. No point of the structure comes any closer to the setback lines than they were originally. I think it's point, it was .4 on the side yard and 4.1 on the front, front yard line, and those, those haven't changed. Actually, the sideline's a little bit better, it's all, it's .5 now. My client is selling the property, and she's actually selling it to another client of ours, Pat Leveque, who wants to get in there and get the house finished. So, if you would be willing to grant this modification, I would ask the board, we've sent a draft decision over to Eleanor, and the sooner we can get it signed, the better, so that the work can get done. I know that some of the neighbors would like to see this house finished, and Pat and Jody want to get it finished.
Okay. Uh, what is this, what is this old, what the heck's the date on this old? No, it's white, ancient, never mind. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? I certainly don't have any big concern about the inch and a half and...
No concerns.
Yeah, Jeff's instruments getting more accurate, so, to the extent that nothing else changed in the most, I guess, most recent, uh, so just be no exterior construction was the only other, um...
Right.
...restriction, or...
Yeah, that's fine. The exterior's pretty much done.
Everything else from the previous special permits are, are still intact also, correct?
Right, yes.
Things like the Nantucket Housing Need Covenant Program?
No, I don't know. There's just one house there.
What the heck is this, then? So, there's one dwelling unit?
There's one dwelling unit, there's always been one dwelling unit.
And it's already up to maximum ground co, it's over ground cover, I think, isn't it?
Uh, it's 29.6 percent. Yeah, there's nothing else that's, can really go there. Do you know which house this is, Ed? I have a cop, a picture of it, if that might help.
I don't, I'm just looking at the old, um, decisions.
Yes, I've been in it.
Little, little house. Close.
Yeah, I sort of know which one it is, yeah.
This is where the closest one is. Is this corner?
I don't, yeah, I have no problem with the, with the issue, I just wondered if, anyway. I'm good with it.
Yeah.
So, are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Who's, who's our board?
Well, we don't, we, I guess with a new, when would I pick the board? Before the motion? What?
On voter.
Right, so we have, we don't have a motion yet.
Well, but then I have to pick the board and then ask for the motion? Yes, that would be the norm?
Public.
Yeah, is there anything, Pat, you want to speak about this?
Public.
You're the only public, not discounting the lawyers, that we have today.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to...
Well, wait, I have to pick the board, I guess. So, Mark, you in?
Sure.
All right. You're out.
Yep.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five. Okay?
Good.
So, will somebody make, this is very awkward.
It is awkward.
I don't like this new method, but somebody make a motion and we'll move on. Susan, you were making motion?
Uh, yeah, so...
To grant the relief?
Grant the relief as requested.
Which is a modification.
Yes, not a special permit. Modification as special permit.
Okay, somebody want to second that one?
Second.
Mark got there first, okay. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll keep going, I guess.
Should we do the other business?
Well, no, we have, I assume Mr. Glidden's here for MHD Partners.
Oh, sorry.
1016 MHD Partners Real Estate LLC, for Goose Cove Lane, for the applicant.
I asked Eleanor to find out who owned, the beneficial owner of this was. I never heard anything.
I emailed you back.
She emailed you back, I saw it.
Um...
I thought you responded to it.
I thought you did, too.
Yeah, you did.
I know I did, and I thought I saw you.
And he was here last month, too.
No, I was here last month.[1511.13][1511.13](Laughter).
Jeff, you're on this one.
Who was the owner?
As we're alternating.
Okay.
Well, I must not have had a conflict, I would have, yeah, said everything.
Are we ready?
Mark, alternating or not, you can still sit at the table and discuss it.
Sure.
Okay?
For the applicant, Richard Glidden. Our client purchased vacant land at Goose Cove, the new sub, for Goose Cove, the new subdivision, it used to be the, his lot, used to be the tennis courts, I think.
Oh, correct.
For twistums. And he's, his idea, he owns an existing cottage on 43 Tennessee Avenue, which is, now it's in this new Manticat Zone, where the height limit is 25 feet.
Village Residential.
Whatever, Village, Village, HOD. He's, the house is 25, the house he wants to move is 25.5. It's, that is, it's also in the district, so it's, it's a non-conforming use where it exists. The gentleman would like to move it from 43 Tennessee, put it at Goose Cove, and then build a new house on 43 Tennessee. The, it's, the, the lot is, if we're looking, and unfortunately, it's, I think we need variance relief, so, you know, the, the lot is unusual, and that one-third of the lot is Goose Cove Pond, so two-thirds of the lot is upland, and one-third is, is more than wetland, it's a pond. And there was a big dip in the lot because they dug out to build, put the tennis courts in to keep them out of the wind. So, it, you know, any, any negative impact on the neighborhood by a .5 foot, you know, structure, instead of 25 being 25.5, seems to me to be pretty meaningless. I don't think there's anybody that's filed any objections or issues, and it, it, you know, it just, just seems to make sense. There's, you know, there's going to be a, he's going to build a new house on Goose Cove, he's going to move this, this house, and then, you know, at the end of the day, there's going to be a house on this lot, and there's going to be a house on Tennessee Avenue.
Okay. So, to be clear, there's, there's no manipulation of the grade, et cetera, he's just taking this building, moving it over to there. He's not popping it out of the ground?
No, I think he could, I mean, without relief, he could probably somehow, I don't know, manipulate the grade and get, and, and get, and, you know, fill in or, I don't, I, I, I don't know, but his intention, no, there's no manipulation of grade.
Okay, but I, I just want to be clear, because the, the plans look that there's roughly six to eight inches of exposed foundation, and that's what's happening from existing grade. There's no, again, grotesque manipulation...
That, that is my understanding, and that's what the plan showed.
Because there's no dimensions on these plans, they're, you know, it's relatively...
No HTC approval that we can look at to see.
Yeah. I mean, is he putting it, where is the 25.5, I don't have a fundamental problem with the 25.5. I just want to know where it starts from and, and where it finishes at.
It would be nice if we had a, you know, an existing topo and a proposed topo telling us what's being planned.
I think so.
Are you through, are you through HTC?
Yeah, let me see, I'm not, actually, I'm not sure.
If you look at the first page, A, of the architectural drawings, you can see that the land area that the house is being situated on as proposed is flat, and it's way...
Well, those aren't, those aren't topos, that's the distance from Goose Cove Pond.
Is that right? Those are 15?
I think that's the 100 and the 50 and the, that's my guess, Mark.
Okay.
You know, I just have seen in recent months, years, you know, some, you know, people, you know, this is submitted as a perfectly flat lot. I just want to get it right, is what I'm trying to mumble, so we need a little more information, I think.
So you need a, you'd like to see a before and after topo, showing...
Yeah, and some dimensions on the house, that, that it really is 25.5 from, from grade, when grade is eight inches down, or, or whatever, just a little more evidence.
Now, I'd settle on having an HTC COA, too, because that typically notates grade changes, if any.
Mark, does it?
Yes.
Not always.
Not always, not always, but I'm saying...
So I'm saying if it's coming before us, and we, you should have that till, by the way, I agree, but it's not...
It probably exists.
Because some people present the lot as perfectly flat on their HTC application, and in reality, it's got a nine-foot slope difference, so some people get hurt. Anyway, that's my feeling. So, if that's okay with you, Dick?
So, I guess we, request to be continued for a month, and we'll come back with the information you need.
Great.
Now, yeah, so, you want, somebody want to make that motion?
Motion to continue?
Yeah, till, till April 14th?
Till April 14th.
Did you activate?
I did activate, well, I'm activating him now.
Yeah.
Did the public...
I've been activating.
Did the public...
Okay, Jeffrey is, the, the sitting board is now this way. Jeffrey, Carol.
Did you open the public?
Did I, did I open the public here?
Did you ask the public?
Well, the public was, there was no public until a minute ago. Are you here to speak to this, either one of you?
Some of you.
Thank you. I don't need to.
There's no public, just these guys.
I'm kidding.
Second time you serve, that's...
Uh, okay, now that we've gotten that out. Jeffrey made a motion to continue. Who wants to second that?
I'll second.
Susan seconds. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye, aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we can re, are you here for, uh...
I'm here for...
Okay. 516, okay, yeah. Just FYI, you, you two were not, oh, you're not sitting on this, Susan?
No.
Okay, never mind. We don't have to go into it. Well, I will go into it, because you guys, you two weren't here. We are adopting a slightly new, well, not slightly, it is a new policy where the alternates are at the table, can discuss things, and then if there are five regular board members sitting, they would be the voting board. If not, I'll appoint somebody, probably on a rotational basis. So, anyway, feel free, Stephen. Did I call that one yet? I did, you want to hear? 516 William J. Stone II, 8 Atlantic Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, this one, I think, is, I hope, relatively simple. What we have is a situation where there was a 4181L subdivision, and part of what the applicant did was move a building forward in the lot. There was zoning board relief required and provided for that move, and the house was put in the exact location that was shown on the zoning plan, on the plan sheet provided to the zoning board, and was put in place using a surveyor. The problem that we ran into is that when the building commissioner came to do the inspection, he said, "No, you've moved the house, you now need to have compliant entryways." So the house, which had one step, now needs a stoop, a landing, and then the step. So what it's done is add several feet to the side door and the front door. And there's basically nothing that we could do about it, because we'd have to move the house three feet in order to be compliant, or get rid of the doors, neither of which seems like a great idea. So the applicant seeking relief for the intrusion caused by the addition of the landing to the stairs, which no one really thought of until they went to get a CO. If you look at the zoning application that was provided, the house was drawn in using the current stair. If you look at the HTC application, the house was approved with the current, not the current, the existing stair. It wasn't until the CO inspection, when the concept of the landing was, was required.
Any questions?
I, I just have one piece of informative information that kind of baffles me. The building permit on page, on page four under zoning compliance for this project listed the distance from the front property line to the building at 18 feet. Now, obviously, that's got to be some kind of an error, but, you know, the building department issued this permit based on those dimensions, and we now have this problem. Quite frankly, I think there are other ways to solve this problem, and part of it is manipulating the grade to some degree, creating a ramp sidewalk up to a step and, or a sidewalk brick stoop or something that might be an alternate for this, but we've got some discrepancies here in the documentation that moved this project forward through the building permit process. And 18 feet is a lot different from six or seven feet.
Yeah, the only thing I can say to that, Mark, is I think their applica, well, we have to see it, but their application, I'm assuming in, in our ZBA packet, page 51, was what they submitted, but it's, you know, and they measured off the road, so maybe the applicant just didn't know what he was doing. I, I also have a problem with it, though. I mean, it doesn't seem inadvertent, it just seems poorly planned. If you need a stoop, you need a stoop, and it should have been put in there, on the plans, and the building or the lots should have been created to accommodate it, and to come back after the fact and say, "Well, now we need a stoop." Doesn't seem inadvertent to me, it seems, again, poorly planned, and I don't, I'm not in, frankly, inclined.
Well, the house was situated with, using a surveyor to have it be far enough back to be compliant with the setback. And in fact, when it was placed down with the existing stairs, it was compliant, both of the, because those stairs are only, you know, six or eight inches, or whatever, or deepest stairs. And so the application was for a compliant structure. The problem is, is that it doesn't meet building code, and what the applicant didn't understand at the time was that they were going to have to come into compliance. I don't, I don't know how we could come into compliance on the front section by going with a ramp, because it's basically, the, the stair that was there was the exact width to, to coming to the setback. They didn't leave any room for anything like this. And then on the side, I think that, isn't there a window well right there?
That's a design issue.
Yeah, right.
They put the window well in there. It wasn't there before, there was no basement, the thing was moved, so that one is just, just a real stretch, in my opinion.
Well, the side, there is, there is a slight, there is a way to deal with the side door, which is that potentially they could get relief, and I think they'd actually need zoning relief to do it, to change the lot line to make it compliant, because they own both lots, it's an interior lot line. So, you know, then it's just a matter of which legal fiction this board decides it wants to adopt in order to cure this.
Why is that a fiction?
What?
Why would that be a fiction?
Well, the, the lot line is, you know, a legal thing, it's, and, and it's an interior lot line on these, on these two lots, so...
It impacts their other lot.
Right. Only a little. We could, there is that, there is that option, that we could change the lot line, but there's no way to fix the front door, because you're, it's a four-foot intrusion into a 10-foot setback. Any, any side ramp or whatever is still going to intrude. So, you know, I don't know that it makes sense to split the difference there and give relief for one, but not the other, and require the lot line change, but if that was what the board wanted, we could accommodate that. But, you know, hopefully, we can come to some resolution here.
Why would they need a three-foot landing if it's an in, is it an outswinging door?
There's a storm, uh, yeah, it's an inswinging door, I don't think you do.
So who's the outswinging door?
There's no storm door on it.
Well, the only outswinging door, it would be the storm door, and so, I mean, if you have...
There isn't even one on the, on the photos that are sent to us.
Right. So, I'm not convinced that you need the stoop either. You may want the stoop.
Uh, no, the, the, when the building commissioner did the inspection, there was no stoop, there was the stair, it was the building commissioner who said, "You have to replace this with a stoop."
Well, I haven't been able to do the...
So if the building commissioner is incorrect on the code issue, you know, that's a little outside my pay grade.
Well, Mark, you're fairly conversant with the, the bill.
Typically, if there's less than two steps to grade, I don't believe you need a, a compliant stoop.
That was my understanding, but I guess, Steve, if you want to continue this and at least show some evidence that the building inspector...
That there's no code alternative? Is that what you're saying? I, I'd be happy to do that.
And if it's an ins, outswinging door for some bizarre reason, you would have, I, I wouldn't bother, I would just make it an inswinging door.
Sure.
Because I'm not inclined, frankly. I mean, this was, this was, you know, totally owner error, or, or operator error, I should say.
It is, it is the mistake associated with having an owner building permit instead of a contractor who would be responsible for making it code compliant, you know, in this case.
Well, this particular owner not only did all that, but he subdivided under 81L and could have done, could have easily made this work with the stoop.
If he had understood that he needed one, I'm sure he would have placed the house differently, absolutely. This was a surprise to him at the time when they went to get their CO. But, you know, with, with, with the suggestion of continuing for a month and going and seeing if there's a code, a way to deal with this, you know, it never occurred to me that perhaps the building commissioner was either wrong and/or that there was a, you know, physical structure way to change the door or manipulate the grade, so I'm happy to at least explore those to see if there's a non-zoning relief way to deal with this.
I mean, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, reflecting back to the September 11, 2014 letter to the applicant or to the homeowner, it says that, that they denied the certificate of occupancy because of the encroachment. There's nothing that says they, that you were required to have a stoop and therefore not satisfying the building code. So they're reacting to the fact that there's a stoop there. Now, you say that when, when they went and did the inspection, that the building inspector said you must have a stoop or a landing there.
I think they...
And, and I don't quite understand that for this application.
Nor do I, and I think if that was, if that was part of their reasoning for denying the application, i.e. you don't have a, well, no, that would have come after this.
It comes, it comes after...
You would have gotten this, another letter first, saying you don't have a stoop.
Right.
You're not getting the CO.
Right, there would have been a denial of the CO based on the fact that you weren't meeting code conditions for your front door.
Right.
As an EGR store.
I mean, the pictures that were submitted to us show no stoop, I mean, it, uh...
It also shows an inswinging door.
Yeah, and it's an inswinging door, it appears, and the, the...
The issue came up at an inspection, not, not through a denial letter.
Right.
The denial letter came when the survey was submitted.
It may have been because of the elevation from the front door to the grade was so extreme that you needed another step.
No, but look at the pictures, that's not the case.
Well, there, you know, I'm not sure it is.
And interestingly enough, the final sign-off from building is, has been signed, and it says nothing about a stoop. I can't read, it, it appears that they got the inspection, at least from the evidence that we have in here, they got the inspection, it passed inspection, then they put the stoop on, and then they submitted the ASBIL and said, "And that was a problem."
I think, I think that's a really valid...
The fact that it's signed off with no note about a stoop...
No, because it was changed.
It was changed after the final...
But it didn't need to be changed.
Inspection, obviously.
Right, obviously, I did not participate in the inspection process and all these kind of things, so I'm coming after the fact, trying to seek relief. I think that the relief is justified, but I think that going to see if we can figure out if there's a way to do it without the relief is certainly something that's reasonable for the board to suggest, and something that I can go back to my client with, and see if either a grade change, or a change in the swing of the door, or maybe a double check of the building code could, could get us there. If we could avoid the relief, that's much better for everyone.
Steve, I think what Ed is saying is, the building department physically signed off on the building permit for a final. That meant they did all their inspections and everything they met, met code, with just the step. Your guy came in and put the step in after the fact, the survey was done, and it's, "Oh my God, what did we do here?" The violation letter comes into play. That's the way I see it.
That's the way I see it.
So I think you remove the step, you change the survey, and you figure out if that gets you your occupancy permit. If it doesn't, come back to us, and we'll, we'll look at the other encroachment or whatever's happening on the rear thing, and we'll deal with that.
If, if there is no way to remove this stoop because of some code issue that cannot be addressed by the owner, I will have evidence for you of that. Okay? I don't, I, we're a little beyond where I could speak to it at the moment.
Fair enough. So, yet another continuance?
I do, I do like coming back, so.
Do you like having me back?
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to continue the application till the next regularly scheduled meeting.
It's not good.
Any, anybody in the public, Arthur?
Arthur, you're up.
No, I just wanted to know if you wanted to speak to this.
The meeting was so, so late, yeah.
No, you're good, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak to this application?
No.
No, we'll get you in a minute, Arthur.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, okay, so the meeting's, the motion's been made? Who seconded it? Jeffrey seconded, and all those in favor say aye, aye. So that's the continuance, thank you. Okay, so now we're to speaking to Arthur.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Arthur. I didn't mean to catch you off guard. So 416 Donald K. McKinnon, trustee of Nantucket 106 Surfside Realty Trust, AKA Surfside Commons 40B, 106 Surfside Road, where the applicant?
The only thing that we're doing here today is dealing with the question of putting up stakes of the corner of the proposed buildings and height balloons in order for the board to be able to go out and, and view the site before the next meeting. We do expect to be going forward with this at the April meeting, and accordingly, we wanted to try to schedule this so that the, the board would be able to observe the physical dimensions of the project, as was requested at the last meeting. I'm informed by my client that the week of the 21st would be what he would be shooting for in terms of when he could get this up, and specifically, he suggested that the best day for his people to be able to, to put up particularly the balloons, which obviously we don't want to have up for very long, because, you know, they can blow away in the wind, which we tend to have in Nantucket, would be the 23rd. And I don't know whether the, and, and at midday, I don't know whether that works for everybody, but if it did, that would be what we would propose.
Arthur, I want to just let you know I'm not playing on my phone, I'm looking for, for a list in here.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
What is the material inside the balloon that's lifting it into the air? It's not helium, is it? I mean, don't we have a bylaw that says you can't put helium balloons in the air?
You can't sell.
Oh, you can't sell, but you can rent, lease, or, that's, that's interesting.
You can utilize helium.
You can utilize, but you can't sell them.
We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that the balloons don't go out and...
That's another wrinkle in this meeting.
We have, we have no desire for the balloons for any purpose other than to help the board.
All right, so just to be clear, this is what I think we're looking for, but the board members should, should pipe in if they don't think so. Corners of each of the four proposed residential buildings and the clubhouse should be clearly and accurately staked. We can get you a list of this, Arthur, if you'd be helpful.
Yes, please.
Each stake should include a description, I, E or EG, building X, north, northeast corner, et cetera, et cetera. Um, yeah, it doesn't appear that the buildings have been numbered on the preliminary engineering plan, so we should do that anyway, so we know which buildings are being referred to. Again, there should be some key to the plan and to the stakes that we can refer to. Stakes should be placed to identify the property lines, we talked about that, unless there's some unusual natural feature like a river or something that creates the line. Stakes should be placed at the center line of the proposed access, or I, I would change that to both sides of the driveway.
Either side, yeah, both sides.
Stakes showing the proposed finished grade elevation should be placed where filled conditions have been proposed. I'm going to go a little further than that. There is a place, if I was reading the grading plans correctly last time, where there's quite a bit of cutting being done, I think that needs to be denoted. I mean, whether or not it's the center of the cut, and the stake says cut 10 feet here, that needs to be made clear. Anyone else on, on the stakes?[1795.12] Good with that? I mean, the other thing, I suppose you could do, which might be helpful to get a sense of the scale on the lot other than just stakes, is paint from stake to stake, just, you know, with marking paint, just to get a sense of the... Right, the envelope of the building. So, I would add that. The balloons should be placed at each of the corner stakes of the residential buildings. So, the question I have for the board is, do we want those balloons at eve height or at ridge height?
I think when we were doing the high school wind project, we had to put the balloon at the nacelle height, which was essentially where the rotor of the blades were.
Right.
I think the balloons need to go up to the height of the building because these buildings are fairly extreme in their height. Eve height would be maybe, what, fifteen feet, sixteen, eighteen feet?
Oh, no, the eve height. I'm talking about the, you know, the, it's a good point, Mark. I had to look at the design. You definitely have to do the ridge height.
Yeah.
The question is, do we want the highest sort of front elevation balloon height to the four corners? Eve height is not correct because you're right, some of those eves come down almost to a...
I think we need to focus on the ridge height for the buildings because I think the HDC is going to want to participate in this in some fashion when this gets done, and they always look at ridge height implication.
Can we, can we do both?
Yeah, we can definitely do both. It's just where the four corners should be. So, maybe what we can do, and I'm happy to do this, is just take the plan and, you, you have full-scale plans, don't you, Eleanor? And we'll just scale and number and say we would like the balloon in. That gives a representation of sort of the, what I would term not necessarily the eve, but sort of the beginning, something.
Are you looking for the maximum height?
No, the maximum height would be the ridge height balloon that also has to be put in. It's sort of to get a sense of the four corners of the building that, that present mass to, to the, to, and I, I just don't have the plans in front of me to come up with a more informed thought. Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
What time are we proposing?
You can want to limit it a little bit, maybe. I mean, you don't want it to get too confusing with too many balloons.
Well, I would, no, I would say one ridge height balloon in the four corners.
You can use different colored balloons.
I, you know, you don't want it to confuse you. And by the way, the balloons should be put in accurately and taking into consideration any fill. So, if there's fill, I think, yeah, yeah, good enough. Ridge height, we talked about balloons. I would suggest not party balloons, but some sort of heavy-duty weather balloon type deal that isn't going to float away because I see these things being up for more than just the meeting. I mean, I think that they should certainly be up for a little while. So, everybody get, who can't be at the meeting for whatever reason, neighbors, some of us.
Or if it's extremely windy, we have an option to see them on another day when this, these, things aren't being blown horizontal.
Right, we, so don't anticipate that they're going up and down in a day, please, because I don't think that's fair. But as Mark said, even in the wind. And, and if, if for some reason there's a nor'easter forecast on the twenty-third, just get in touch.
Oh, obviously, we wouldn't, you know, want to do it under those circumstances.
Twenty-third, week of the twenty-first, they would put them up.
So, Eleanor's going to contact us?
And it would be red, you know, the thought would be the twenty-third, I think. That was what was, was proposed.
You're going to determine a certain day and I will...
Right, we don't have to do that, but that's what was proposed. Ah, blah, blah, blah. Anything else on the staking and the, uh, four corners?
No, in regards to the elevations of the balloons, I mean, the elevation is a number. The ridge height is added a number.
Yeah, yeah, from grade.
Well, it's not, well, it's...
What do you mean?
It's a number above mean sea level, you know, above sea level. So, if there's, if there's filling or anything going on, you're not going above existing grade, you're going above any proposed grade.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, if they've added four feet of fill, the building is forty feet, it would be forty-four feet from existing. Yeah, absolutely. I don't really, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the twenty-third. I believe I'm here. Tell me, what works for you, Michael? You're a busy man.
Well, why don't we give them, assuming they're going to put it up in the morning of the twenty-third, why don't we say two o'clock?
Hey, it's a big job. I don't, I don't see this being done in the morning personally, but I guess you could get it all staked.
I think the balloons probably will happen in the morning. I think the staking will happen the day before.
Yeah, I think the point is that they would start the staking on the twenty-first. I think that's what, you know, and the, the date of the twenty-third was to give ample time to do all the staking and all the, the work down at ground level.
I mean, the other alternative would be the twenty-fourth, giving them three full days to get this. I mean, if it's pouring rain, they generally don't stake.
So, this, we're talking, this is March twenty-third, twenty-fourth? I'm leaving for Easter, right? Isn't that Easter?
Yeah, Easter is that Sunday, next Sunday.
Yes, I'm leaving the twenty-third, so I'm, I'm not available on the twenty-third and then I'm out for Easter.
When is Easter?
The last Sunday in March.
It's early this year.
Okay, Ed Marshan, who I spoke to briefly, mentioned something about Passover as well, but I thought, I thought I looked up Passover and it's in April. Does anybody know?
It's tied to Easter in some way, or Easter is tied in. Unfortunately, Stephen went home. He might have been able to tell us.
I know. I'm going to look it up again.
They aren't always...
Passover two thousand and sixteen begins in the, in the evening of April twenty-second. So, I think that maybe either I'm, this is incorrect, or Ed was, was confused. I just want to look, Easter two thousand and sixteen is, is indeed March twenty-seventh, so. Anyway, so Susan won't be here the twenty-third, so let's pick another date because I think it's important that everybody see this, so...
It's going to have to be the following week if they're going to need a couple of days to...
Or, or they, they...
Or the twenty-second.
Or they do it, yeah, the week before and put the balloon up on the twenty-second.
I'm not sure, I mean, we, the original that I received from DJ was either the twenty-second or the twenty-third. And then he got back to me saying it would be better to do it the twenty-third. So, I'm assuming that he's running into difficulty in terms of getting it up as soon as the twenty-second. I don't know that for sure.
All right, well, then we're going to have to go to the following week.
So, why don't we go to the following week? I think they should give everybody ample time to look at it and contemplate it before the meeting, which is... The meeting is late in April, too, isn't it, the fourteenth?
Yeah.
It is. I'll be going the second, but, you know, but let's say the, I would say then have them ready for the twenty-ninth. And then if there's a rain day, we have the thirty. Does that work for everybody?
Yes, and what day are we talking about?
Works for me.
Twenty-ninth, which is a Tuesday. I mean, it can be staked out anytime.
Right.
And I would suggest it, you know, sooner rather than later.
Twenty-ninth works.
Twenty-ninth works, Karen?
Sure.
At noon?
At noon? Noon work for everyone?
We're going to be noon.
Doesn't have to be noon. What does everyone think?
Does everyone, do you think they can get the balloons up in the morning?
That's a good question.
They were talking about noon, so I think that...
Let's go to noon, because they, they can tether those balloons down low and keep them strung up and then let go the string and raise them up. I mean, so they can, they can manage that, I would think. Now, is this going to be noticed to other commissions and people involved?
We do it later.
No, 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 let's go together. Because we, we are allowed to, you know, not, not, it's not a, a public meeting, certainly. We don't take tests to... So, we can't even ask, we can ask a question.
You can ask questions, but there will be no discussion amongst you.
Right, but we can, it, it's always good if someone has a question.
We'll clarify all that with attorney court.
Right, but I'm simply saying, rather than going alone, you might not hear another question given that was proposed and an answer, so. Susan, noon is difficult, two o'clock.
Do you need to check with DJ to make sure that following week is going to work for him?
I can put, I tried to call him just before I came over here to see if he was going to be available and didn't get him, but I could try to call him now.
Because he can put that stuff all together in two days.
What's that, Jeffrey?
He could do that work in two days. That's what I understand his thinking was, come down here with the survey for one day and then the balloons the following day. So, if the following week doesn't work for him, the twenty-second would work.
Well, but he, I'm, I'm easy, either one. But by the same token, Mr. McKinnon doesn't have to be there.
No, he doesn't.
No, we, we, so it could...
The twenty, the twenty-ninth would be way better for me than the twenty-second.
Yeah, because you're leaving the next day, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, I, I, so let's just do the twenty-ninth. I mean, that gives him a...
And, and Lisa said she's here Tuesday, so that should work for her.
Exactly. We'll wait for Arthur, but I think that's a good date. And Eleanor, you and I will get a, just a, a list of what I said.
So, you and Ed Marshan will verify that everything's on there before Sarah's here.
So, do we technically have to vote on this?
It's not a voting matter, it's an administrative matter. It's not a consensus.
All right, Michael, we'll just wait to make sure he's in consensus, but I think we're good. So, Michael, the twenty-ninth at two o'clock.
What do you like?
Two o'clock, not noon. Works better for Susan.
Thanks.
And Lisa. Okay?
And then you can eat lunch.
Yeah, I need to eat lunch. I'm going to crank it. Okay, so the twenty-ninth, two o'clock. And, and just rest assured that we will make, Eleanor will make every effort to get this information out to the public, not just through the website.
Direct emails to people who can't already have contact.
All righty, so, you still trying?
Yeah, I'm still trying. I didn't get his cellphone. I'm trying his office just in case.
All right, we'll wait one moment. But again, if he could do it the week before, he should be able to do it for this week, and he doesn't need to be there.
In that vein, had a few of the local boards and departments asked if they could have another extension on the submission of comments, which are all going through Libby at her request and then coming to us.
They're not being edited, but...
No, she just wants to see...
No, I'm not.
Okay, so...
I'm not getting him, so let's still assume that's okay.
Two o'clock, twenty-nine.
Two o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Eleanor will get the word out, all the comments.
Can be extended because some of the boards may want to, some of them have already done, get comments and concerns.
There's obviously no chance that this is going to get wound up at the April fourteenth meeting, so nobody has to worry a lot.
Such a pessimist.
It's a courtesy for the applicant to be able to address any comments and concerns, but I think we'll have to push that to beyond April.
And will we get copies of those comments and concerns?
They'll be in a packet.
With, with more than adequate...
We requested the comments.
Right, when, when, right now, what is the deadline?
It was originally February twenty-second, everything was shifted, then it was March twenty-first.
Yeah.
And now with this site visit taking place after that, those boards that have requested for a variety of reasons to have an extension, I'll let them know.
I think seven days before the meeting would be an absolute minimum to have them in our hand.
It would help me because I have to assemble the packet, which is a rather large...
Even if the entire packet isn't ready, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to read a portion of the packet, at least so that...
So, I'll let them know if it's...
You could also just email us as they come in, as...
I could, I would, I think it'd be better for you if it was all assembled in one thing.
I was saying, if it's coming...
It would, but it puts a burden, if we get it, go ahead.
I was going to say, if some people have already submitted, once Libby's done with them and they get to us, I would... What, can't we just get them contemporaneously with Libby? Like, why would she have to look at them first?
Well, yeah, that seems very odd to me.
If she's not editing them, can we just get them at the same time? Can we just ask her?
I'm happy to call Libby about that. I don't, I mean, she's insisted that she see them before we go? Or she's simply asked you to send them to her?
My understanding is that she sees them before.
Well, I, I'll clarify that with her. I'll put my man, my, my...
I was not going to call to the conversation, I was told.
Okay, so it could just be a thing of telephone, but, because it would be helpful, I, I would think, to start. You know, I don't want to just read them like three days or whatever before the meeting. I'd like to have some time to digest.
I, I'm with you a hundred percent because when we get the monster packet, three days before, four days before, it's hard. Everybody has a life and, you know, so I'm happy with getting them contemporaneously and the, and or...
As they come in.
Well, and if some comments are already in, like, I'd like to see them before the site visit, so it might give me something else to think about.
Absolutely.
Or, you know, something that might provide a perspective that we haven't thought of yet that it might...
I understand.
Yeah, okay, cool.
I mean, in that regard, Susan brings up a good point. It would, it would actually be very nice to have all the comments before the site visit.
So, I can leave the deadline at the twenty-first?
Yeah, because they could also add, they could also, I mean, they could also, if they're going to attend the site visit, I mean...
Don't you think the site visit might solicit more comment?
Yeah, good point.
Maybe it would, and then they could just, they could add, they could add additional comment.
I mean, the original idea was that the site visit was on February ninth and the comments were due on the twenty-second so that people would have a chance specifically to...
Right.
I mean, I don't think once, yes, there's a deadline for comments, but they could still submit.
Absolutely.
You know, Arthur said, this isn't going to wrap up April fourteenth, so people are always welcome to submit comments, right?
Absolute public hearing.
Yeah.
Not only are they allowed to, but I hope they will. So, for now, we'll leave it, what, the deadline would be, I'd say April seventh, seven days before to give us ample time. I, I will get in touch with Libby that that means to us by the seventh. So, and why, I'll find out why she seems to think she has to see them first before we do. Not at the same time. Seems very odd to me.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, that's just some miscommunication. Okay?
Okay.
So, the twenty-ninth it is, two o'clock. That's it for me.
And the other meeting is Thursday, the seventeenth at...
Thursday, the seventeenth, if you'd like to see Sagem's path, which I think would be informational since we approved it on. I'd like to see it.
Yeah, totally.
Can we talk about the date, the date of the meeting in May? I think it's the twelfth. Is that correct?
It is the...
Twelve, yeah.
Okay. I, I'm here, but I'm leaving that day, so...
We could shift it to noon.
That, can we shift it?
If the room's available, I can.
Shift it to eleven?
I get the rooms available.
Okay.
So, I'll look into it and get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm also most likely traveling that day, so...
So, you are...
Traveling, like, you can't meet, or you're traveling afterward?
If it was earlier, that would be better.
Better.
But I will confirm that we're not leaving. I'll confirm, I'll talk to my husband and see what our plan is for that day.
Would eleven o'clock be doable for the other board members?
Yes.
I think so. I'm going to put it in, tangibly. Okay. So, I guess I need a motion to adjourn unless...
Make that motion.
Wow, okay, motion's been...
Chairman?
Yes.
One question. If this room isn't available at eleven, can we check on availability upstairs?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. Because I'm flying out of the country at that rate.
Unacceptable.
Well, what time is the jet touching down here?
Wheels up at nine. It's up to be in Boston.
And if there's weather, you're going to have to leave in a horse.
Yeah, no, no problem. I mean, eleven's fine with me. Okay, I'm good? So, did...